To order, it being November third, twenty twenty five, a little after six o'clock. And so we will begin with an opening invocation by Pastor Eric, followed by a pledge allegiance to the flag, but led by Commissioner Morgan. Please stand. Welcome again.
To be here with this group. I thank you, Lord, that you are, you have put us here for this time and this place. And so we recognize not only the privilege that is, but also the responsibility we have. Father, in our community, from governance, local governance, and taxation, and businesses and commerce, to our public safety, all of these are matters that this body speaks into and oversees and makes decisions regarding. And so I pray for just continued wisdom for them. Allow them to see the landscape of our city correctly. And may they recognize that they are being used by you to bring about a good place to live, a blessed place to live. And I pray, Father, that would be the goal, and you would provide them with the minds, the thoughts, and the actions and decisions to bring that about. We thank you very much, Lord, for all you do for us. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. So now we go to our city clerk with the community announcements, please.
Four eighth, the city of Longwood will host a concert in the park and food trucks on Saturday, November eighth, from four P M. to eight P M. at Ryder Park. The concert will begin at six P M. featuring Aaron Lightning. The downtown four B, the downtown Longwood Cruisin' Car Show will be held on Saturday, November eighth, from five to eight, in the historic district of Longwood, located off Church Avenue. Four C, the Longwood Movie in the Park will be held on Friday, November fourteen, beginning at seven P M. in Ryder Park. This is a free event, and the movie will be a Minecraft movie. Those are all the community announcements.
The movies are back, and I watched half of that on the airplane when I was returning. So now I gotta see the other half, I guess. All right. We go now to why a lot of people are here, to proclamations. We will proclaim November nine through fifteenth as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week in our city of Longwood, and it's worded as such. Whereas each day dedicated law enforcement records personnel serve the citizens of Longwood for Florida by providing vital services that are essential to the efficient operation of the Longwood Police Department and its records section, contributing to the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas the men and women who serve as law enforcement records personnel, including the administrative manager, police record specialist, evidence custodian, and senior administrative staff are the backbone of the criminal justice system by ensuring the accuracy, integrity, security, accessibility of criminal records. They play a key role in assisting law enforcement officers with investigations and maintaining criminal justice statistics. Whereas law enforcement records personnel demonstrate expertise in managing complex record-keeping systems is crucial to identifying suspects, pursuing leads, and ensuring the successful prosecution of crimes. Whereas, along with their technical expertise, law enforcement records personnel exemplifies professionalism, courtesy, and efficiency in their daily interactions with the public officers and partner public safety agencies. And whereas law enforcement records personnel week provides the opportunity to honor those who ensure that the critical role of records personnel in criminal justice remains a vital part of law enforcement, and to recognize there are many, many contributions to the well-being of the communities in which they serve. And whereas the city of Longwood commends and salutes our Longwood Police Department records staff for their dedication and commitment to service within this essential aspect of law enforcement and criminal justice in our community. Now, therefore, we, the city commissioners, and city of Longwood do hereby proclaim November nine through November fifteen, twenty twenty five, as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Week in the city of Longwood, Florida, and all urge all citizens to observe this week in honor of all dedicated Longwood Police Department records personnel, and to celebrate those throughout the nation who serve with distinction each day and witness whereof. I, the mayor of Longwood, have here to fix my signature. And for November twenty twenty five, please come forward. All of you.
Commissioners, thank you very much. City manager, thank you very much. City clerk, thank you for putting that proclamation together. It is no underest, no misstatement to say they are the backbone of our agency, for sure. Yes, very professional, most of them. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Pastor Eric. Next, I turn to Commissioner Morgan, asking if he has a nomination for Businessperson of the Month.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for always being here, by the way. For Businessperson of the Month for District Four, I'm gonna go with Recovery Connections of Central Florida, CEO and owner, George Margolis.
Okay, nomination of George Margolis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Margolis. Okay, do we have any board appointments? No, and I see no public participations?
None.
So therefore, I don't have to read all that, so we'll be fine. But I would if I needed to. Mayor and Commissioners report, let's go to District Three, please, with your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Longwood Historic Society for running a good run for the Monster Dash on last Saturday, Saturday before last. I was out there rotary tent, including Tony Boni and Frank Carter, and we got to watch everybody else run. I didn't have to run, but a lot of creative costumes from the runners and pets, and it was, it was fun. That was my first time. But I'd also like to congratulate them. They, I won't give the official number, but they raised a good amount, and it'll be, help get that roof done.
Get the roof done, yeah.
Yeah, they got enough. And it was very successful. So thank you for all the sponsors and all the participants and runners, because they really do support our historic district and what makes our city unique. I also want to commend the Milwi Technology Student Association. Those students came and presented to Rotary last week as a pinch hitter for some government officials who were shut down. And on short notice, they came and gave a wonderful presentation. They divided it all up. I had not heard of the Technology Student Association before. They do everything from robotics to leadership, and they brought their projects. They explain what they do, the competitions they do. They've won some national trophies over Milwi. And what I'd like to do at some point in the future, I know they had, TSA had their Engineer Week, TSA Engineer Week, back in October, but there's a regular Engineer Week in February. I'd like to try to get a proclamation recognition for them, because they've won some pretty big awards in national competitions, and they will be continuing to compete. And they're great kids, but I'll bring that up so we can give direction. Also, I went to Leadership Seminole. They had their Call to Service at Northland Rink. I appreciate all the community coming together here in Longwood. And Tony was there, would be the change. And there were a lot of, Resco Outreach Mission was there, the Meals on Wheels, all the charities that serve our community were there. It was an opportunity for people to come and connect with them and learn how to serve their community. And I'm glad that they were right here in Longwood. And I don't know how many years it's been. They were there last year also. And it's a, it's a great event, and I encourage people to look for it next year. Mayor's update, I attended with my fellow commissioners at the Seminole County Chamber. It was enlightening, and I'd say Mayor Sackett did a fine job. I'm sure he'll have more to say. Halloween was festive in my neighborhood. Many more creative decorations than in previous years. It seems to be escalating. And there were a few, because it was on a Friday night, there were a few house parties. The kids came through in a compact, like, one-hour period, and I gave away almost all my candy, which was the goal. And, and it was, and I saw the C O Ps come by and the police department come by, so everything was safe and happy in my neighborhood. So I appreciate everybody who worked to keep Halloween safe in Longwood. And on Saturday, I attended the Oktoberfest. I had a good time watching the costume contest, and I want to thank all the vendors that came out. And I ended up adopting a nine-month-old terrier mix puppy named Faith from Seminole County Animal Services. And all I can say is so far, so good. It's only been a couple of days. I've got the camera on my phone. I'm trusting her to, in my home, not in a kennel, and she's been very, she's been good. I'm walking her around the neighborhood. And just to let people know that there are good dogs out there at these kinds of events. There was no, the adoption fee was waived. So I wasn't expecting it, but I ended up going home with the free dog. And she's wonderful. And she didn't have to go back to the shelter. And I can tell you, she really appreciated it. The first twenty-four to thirty-six hours, she was sleeping constantly. She was just glad to have a bed. She just went right into the, right into the dog bed I have and slept there soundly. So there are nice animals out there if you're looking for your, for your family. You don't have to go to a breeder and spend a whole lot of money. There are good dogs out there. And with that, that was my report.
Congratulations, Dad. Wonderful. I wonder about the questions. All right, we go now to District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, congrats, Matt. That's awesome. They were able to make use of that event and be able to save a dog in the process, right? On the twenty-fourth, me and Mayor Sackett attended the Lyman High School pep rally. Pretty good spirits from all the students that were there. And again, this year, they headed out there on their track. And it took forever to get started, and a lot of heat, I might add, but it was worth it. It was cool to see other electeds come out from the school board and County Commissioner Konstantin, and our city representatives there as well, supporting Lyman High School for their upcoming homecoming game. And then obviously, the next day and night, their homecoming dance, which is, we all remember, one of the biggest nights of our life, back in the day when we were in high school. Early that next morning, I had to get up at four fifteen to get our Lyman High School Young Men of Excellence Clubs and Young Women of Excellence Clubs scattered throughout our city for our Longwood Historic Society's Monster Dash Five K Race. And again, I just, I wanted to say what I just said in the last sentence before I said this sentence, because it's so impressive. These are kids that are gonna be running our country one day. They're gonna be doing huge things. Young men and young women of excellence clubs, specifically at Lyman, I'm speaking on, for them to give up their Saturday mornings, and forget that, the Friday night before, where their homecoming big football game was, and still get up at the butt crack of dawn to come out there because they wanted to serve our community. Because again, these are future leaders. They're literally the definition of that term, future leaders of tomorrow, and do right, because they committed to our Monster Dash. It's incredibly impressive to me. I was shocked at it. We had a Chick-fil-A vendor out there that was a little bit late, kept promising them breakfast sandwiches or chicken sandwiches. And Chick-fil-A, thank God, finally got there, and then all was good, once I was able to start throwing them all chicken sandwiches. They were happy and appeased, and more importantly, they were there to root on the runners slash walkers or scooters even, folks that took part in our Longwood Historic Society's Monster Dash Five K. Shout out to Jason for another really job well done as a president of Longwood Historic Society that many of us remembers of. That's gonna continue to do good things in our historic district, taking care of our three historic buildings. Two days later, on the twenty-eighth, my wife Larissa and I both take part in what's called our Parks Foundation, and we had a fundraiser to continue to raise money for special needs playground equipment being put out throughout Seminole County as a whole, and all of our green spaces and parks for, for not just kids that are neurodiverse, like my son that's autistic, but for, let's say, it's a kid in a wheelchair, for example, that has physical issues and not being able to get on a swing, let's say, or a slide, let's say. This fundraiser was huge in helping raise money to make it so that child that, let's pretend is in a wheelchair, for example, has that opportunity to have something at a playground for him or her just the same. So if you guys want to join this foundation, it's called PARCS, P-A-R-C-S, sponsored by our Seminole County Board Accounting Commissioners. And it's a huge deal of trying to make sure that we don't leave any child left behind when it comes to our playgrounds and our green spaces here in beautiful Seminole County. All right, so the mayor's panel. My apologies to Mayor Sackett. My mom, the day beforehand, had the surgeon, if you guys don't know, I'm sure you wouldn't, botched both of her knees since last time I was here at a commission meeting. And so she had to go back under the knife on the twenty-ninth to get her left knee redone, and was staying with me. So I was there for Seminole County Chamber of Commerce's annual mayor's panel, was always a great time. And right after an hour of being there, I had to get back home and check in on my mother. But it was literally right as the mayor was about to go up and speak. So again, Mayor, my apologies. I headed to get out of there and get my mom woken up and get ice on her knee ASAP in my home. That same evening, at five thirty, attended Longwood Elementary School Truck or Treat Event, which was really successful. It's the most attended I've seen in the last five years, which is my five-year experience, for what it's worth. And then on the thirty-first, I want to thank all the families throughout the city of Longwood that participated. And made sure you had your front door light on to let trick-or-treaters know it was a safe place to come and trick-or-treat. So lots of places in which that was not the case. But we had like three or four really big neighborhoods that really did the best job of making sure they make it fun for our kids every single Halloween season. I want to say thank you to them all. The first, November first, you already heard it earlier, we had our Longwood Oktoberfest. Shout out to Aaron, who's a former board member of our Longwood Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that created this event. And it's been an all-star event since then. Was able to take our dog Wrigley and my son Jackson and my wife Larissa there, and ended up getting a really good deal on our dog's health insurance that I found out only by stopping at every booth, eventually stopping at one to realize I was paying twice as much for insurance as I should be paying. So help, very helpful to the Morgan family. And my dog Wrigley, if you guys don't know, like, she wants to meet everybody on the planet. Jump on him, pat me, pat me, please help me, pat me, pat me. And it was great, because all the other dogs are really good around her. And went through the dog, it was a legitimate dog bathing station, and my dog could not get enough of it. And once she was clean, she kept wanting to go back and do it again and again. So shout out to our community partners that made that event happen. And all of the vendors that were a part of that, that's another thing that makes our city different, in my opinion, than others, special events like that. Before I go, actually, I don't even announce this. I was gonna say, I didn't think I was gonna be able to be there for our Longwood Christmas Parade on December sixth, but my wife and I decided that I will be, because on December fifth, I'm being inducted into my Boys and Girls Club of America Hall of Fame, back in Connecticut, where I grew up as a little boy. And I didn't think I'd be able to get back in time for the parade, but I do. I can. And with that, and Will, you'll go through your report when it's time. But I do want to thank you, City Manager Will. We have an autistic family in our community with two autistic children, both are non-verbal, and one of them eloped. You guys don't know what elope means. It means they run away. And I want to say thank you for taking it so seriously and making sure, along with working with our police department and others, to see that they can get some signage out there of people speeding past there that what the neighborhood they're driving through, and a potential terrible thing that could happen one day. Just wanted to thank you for taking it so seriously and jumping on it like flies on you-know-what. Thank you, sir. And with that, that's my report.
And thank you. I hope your mom's doing much better.
Thanks, Ma.
Okay, my turn. And I had lunch with Taquilla from the Sharing Center, and it was a great lunch, touching base with a longtime friend, as well as someone who's excited about the next five years for the Sharing Center, what's coming up. And she'll be announcing things. And she made me commit to doing the opening prayer for the Thanksgiving breakfast, so I'll be there for that. The pep rally was at Lake Lyman High School. It was warm, but it warms you even more when you see how excited some of those crazy kids are about their football team, even when it's zero and eight. So it's kind of exciting to see the juniors and seniors shout off, the activities between the juniors and seniors and freshmen. It was all just a nice end of a school day before their busy weekend with the dance and game. The mayor's update, yes, that's done. It was fun. All the prep questions that they gave us, we only got through about a third of them. Some people talk too much. She sat to my left, and I threatened her chickens. I threatened her chickens. I said, we're putting in a Chick-fil-A, and she said, well, we got the chickens. I said, yeah, we killed them.
Well done, Mayor.
Yeah, it'll happen. Monster Dash was a lot of fun. I don't know how many runners they had there, but it looked as big or bigger than what it was in the past. Quite a few interesting costumes to see, especially the whole tribe of under-one Dalmatians. It seemed like there were under-one Dalmatians there. And when they get those blow-up costumes, those are something else. You're gonna run a Five K race in that blow-up costume? Good luck to you, buddy. Two, the first and the eighth-place finishers were former students of mine, and they were proud to see me. Their dad's a police officer. So that was great to see and touch up with those kids again, because as they hit twenty-plus years old, nice to see. One more thing is the, I did trick-or-treating up in Minnesota, because my son wanted to go see a Minnesota football game. Grandson wanted to see a Minnesota football game. We went there, had a ball, took both grandsons. I had to fly up there to fly him the one back. One house near our house had three hundred trick-or-treaters. I don't even know how you prepare for three hundred trick-or-treaters, but they did. Also, I'm asked that we consider maybe during additions or comments, raise our merits. And Commissioners report, I'd like to recommend that we take the Friday after Christmas and the Friday after New Year's as a day off for our employees, because Christmas is on Thursdays. I'd like to see that go forward, because my thought is thinking that, boy, did we ask our employees to do a lot with a little with all the shifts and who works here and who we had to hire and all the changes that we had to make with the financial reports and things like that. So we'll bring that up later in a few minutes. And that is the end of my report. District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Short and sweet. I have very little to report. I unfortunately caught whatever's going around, and I did let Will know, but I told him not to tell y'all, because I didn't want you to worry about me. Because whenever I go to the doctor, they want to turn it into something it's not. So I'm, I'm fine. I'm on the mend. It takes a while to work its way out, but I, I'm fine. Been riding around in scout, been enjoying that. I don't want to get anybody in trouble, so I won't say when I was riding with scout rider. But I'm told they understand, they know this anyway, they track them. But on a twenty-five mile an hour road, the driver was going forty-seven. I said, no, 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 no. You don't do that in Longwood. So I said, you'll get a ticket for sure, and I can't get you out of it. So, but I'm really enjoying the scout program. I just want to share that. It's been, you have to wait quite a long time for them to get to you. I had to wait like an hour once and forty-five minutes. I called them at five o'clock today to bring me here. So, but that's understandable, because they, you know, they're knowing the area. Congratulations, Commissioner McMillan, on Faith. My sister and her husband, the last of their dogs, had passed a little while back, and they called her from the kennel, and they said, we have one we have to put down today that can't get adopted. It was a pit mix. They're the hardest ones to get adopted, I'm told. And it has cancer. And my sister adopted it. She said, no, you're not putting that dog down today. I have no dogs right now. I'm taking that dog. And it did similar to what you talked about Faith doing. Her old dog beds are still there. It just made itself right at home. But I will caution you, if you haven't already thought of this, check how Faith does with thunderstorms, because if they're home alone and there's a thunderstorm, I've had a dog like that, you probably have as well. They, I mean, I had one that tore up a wooden closet door, and I came home, all bloody in the mouth from the wood. They're trying to escape any way they can. Fireworks, thunderstorms. So hopefully, that's not an issue with your Faith. But congratulations, and I'm happy for Faith. Commissioner Morgan, are you going to count now?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, can I, how many times do you think you've taken scout service so far?
Oh, my gosh.
Ten?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's really good. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, and I'm hoping that it catches on, because some places it drops me off, people will be out in the parking lot, and they'll be like, "How do you do this?" And the driver will tell them, "You have to sign up."
That's legit. My neighbor, there were two, three of my neighbors have been taken. And I keep running up to the car and I can't catch any time. Say thank you for doing what you're doing.
District, District two, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, alright, first, Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you. Um, you got an amazing team, and that was shown here tonight. And just thank you for having a great team, great department, and keeping us all safe here in the city of Longwood. Appreciate you guys. Uh, Commissioner McMillan, uh, congrats on Faith. I have two rescues as well. And I probably will never purchase a dog from a breeder again, because they are the most loving dogs on the planet, rescues. So, congratulations. Uh, Commissioner Morgan, congrats on, uh, the Hall of Fame with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, that's, uh, that's an awesome honor. Um, Halloween was fun in my neighborhood as well. Had lots of kids coming around. But I went old-school. I went, I went seventies. I had full-size candy bars. And, uh, yeah, and, and the kids were letting all the other kids know that I had full-size candy bars. I wasn't, I wasn't feeling like a nut, so I just did some Mounds instead of Almond Joys. Um, but they loved it, and I had a blast too. Um, so, uh, the mayor's update. Mayor, you did a great job up there. There are some rip shots thrown around up there on, uh, on the panel, though. But, uh, everyone handled themselves well. Monster Dash, I mean, I can't really add much other than, uh, it was amazing. And my favorite one, there was the Dalmatians, but my favorite one was, uh, Scooby-Doo. Uh, Grandma was in the wheelchair, and that was the Mystery Machine, the dog was Scooby. You had the whole clan there, and it was, uh, it was pretty cool. Yes, how was that Call to Service Two with Leadership Seminole? Uh, about forty, forty-five, five-oh-one C-threes were there. It's an amazing event. And it's all about how can you give your time? And where do you wanna give your time? So, Leadership Seminole puts that together for you to meet all different types of organizations. And you can go through and kind of figure out, where do I wanna give my four to five hours a month, uh, volunteering and helping them out? And it also helps out all those five-oh-one C-threes. Uh, I wanna give a big shout-out to, uh, Darryl and Debbie Richardson, the owner of Three Odd Guys. Uh, they actually put on a social for my senior group. Uh, Mayor, you were there. I wanna thank you. You brought the pizzas for the social. Uh, we went and had a great time. Uh, you know, God, that was kind of like a field trip with, with all the seniors. And then, uh, finally, I just wanna bring up, this Wednesday, um, I am at Northland Church, uh, behind the church, from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. Uh, I went and purchased a bunch of food, and I'm putting together bags of food for the seniors with this whole SNAP money not happening. So, uh, please come on by, get there early while supplies last, nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. Uh, the, the, the drive-through line will be in the back of Northland Church. And that's the end of my report, Mayor.
And thank you very much. I'd like to turn to, uh, Commissioner McMillan for further comments on, uh, Declaration of Engineer Week.
Yeah, I, I'd like to bring that up, um, if we could do that in, I believe it's in February. I don't know which week we're, which meeting we do the Joy Awards. I don't, might be really crowded if we bring those kids in too. But if we could work out, uh, when that is and, and invite them in, if there's no objection.
All, all approved? Say aye.
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 Definitely.
Yeah, great idea.
Was there anything else from yours?
Nope.
That was it? And then I did hear me with the, uh, day after Thanksgiving, day after Christmas. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, and just for clarifications, day after Christmas and day after New Year's.
New Year's, okay.
I just wanted the record.
The twenty-sixth and the second.
Thirty-third.
And, yes.
Or the thirty-third.
Thirty-third.
Thirty-third. I like it.
Make me think too much up here, Brian.
Yeah, am I, am I loud today on, through the mic? I feel like I'm loud. Okay.
Were there any other things that we need to further discuss?
No, sir.
Nope.
Just the thing you wanted to bring up.
What was that?
I don't know. You said it. It was the day after. Oh, that's what you just did. Alright, yep, got it.
Hello?
I'm here, yes.
Well, he was preoccupied trying to talk to Will.
I was trying.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? None, none. Uh, so now consent agenda, four items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I would like to move to approve Consent Agenda Item, Consent Agenda Item B, C, and D, and pull A for discussion.
Pull A, okay. Any others to be pulled?
I'll, I'll second that.
Second, we got a motion to approve that, uh, Consent A, uh, B, I mean, Consent ten, B, C, and D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, that's a five-oh. Now we return to Commissioner Deputy Mayor Shoemaker for item A.
Okay, it's not, not a big deal. Um, I didn't get a chance to get ahold of Leanne prior to the meeting. I told her about it when I came, and she knows that I'm going to say this. Um, I don't know if it's from me turning my head and them not hearing me or something. Um, Leanne changed it for the formal minutes. It will be fixed. But it states that I attended an event I did not attend, so I wanted that accurate.
Alright, so we can have that removed?
Yes.
Alright, you wanna make a motion for approval?
Yes, I move to approve ten A.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Shoemaker, and then seconded by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, now we move on to, oh, call the roll, that's right. It's got money involved. Please call the roll.
No, there's no money.
There's, um, ten D.
Well, no, the, the others three have.
Still have to, 'cause of consent.
Ten D, well, yeah.
Do, do we need to remotion?
I think we had to.
We can.
Okay, I, I move to approve item ten A as presented.
Second.
Second?
Is that right, Tony?
So, we just.
Ten, ten A with the changes.
Well, ten A with the change, but B, C, and D, we gotta do them all.
We gotta do them all again?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. We'll try this again. Can teach a dog new tricks, huh? Um, I move to approve ten A, B, C, D, with ten A, the, the minutes will be corrected, and all others as presented.
Second. Alright, now we got a motion from Deputy Mayor Shoemaker, a second from, uh, Commissioner McMillan. All those in favor, say aye.
But let's call the roll. Yes, there you go.
I know, I, I reverted back to.
Oh, okay, okay. Playing a joke.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Alright, that being unanimous, uh, Consent Agenda approved with the change to ten A. Uh, public hearings, are there none, correct?
None.
And regular business? Alright, I have twelve A. And all I wanted to do is to make the public aware, uh, formally, that as discussions ensue with the property tax, uh, measures that are coming out of our session soon, that we make ourselves aware of all of them that are joint resolutions. We ourselves won't discuss these tonight, but it's just an awareness. And if someone does say, "What's your feelings on?" Let's not do that. And let's just turn them to any questions they may have, ask their state legislator, and leave it at that. We do meet again for League of Cities on December sixth, I think, or sixteenth, something like that. But there's a meeting where it gets further discussed within committee. And that's all I wanted in that, that agenda item.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Right before I came to the meeting, watching the news, they were talking about this. Longwood, and we were talking, saying we were gonna talk about it at the meeting. They informed everyone to go to the meeting.
The idea was to get it out there so people start doing their own research.
Yeah, do your homework, everybody.
Alright. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, do, do your homework. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna have opinions on it myself, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the city when I do that. And, um, you know, there are a lot of position, there, there are a lot of proposals out there. You can look at all of them. You deal with homestead, I think almost all of them do not include schools. Um, so, I mean, you, you hear a lot of things. You gotta look at what's actually written and what's being proposed. And then it's all gonna change by the time they vote on it. But ultimately, it comes down to, it's gonna be an amendment to the Florida Constitution. It's up to you, the people, to vote yes or no on it. Whenever they went forward, sixty percent, yes. And if you vote for it, we're gonna do it, because it's the law. So, I mean, so it's your decision, um, as the people, to make that decision, to decide whether or not it actually gets to the ballot. That's the decision.
And, well said.
Mr. Mayor echoing that, um, 'cause I know we don't wanna go into this. Um, it's December fourth, uh, when you'll be there for that. And thank you for bringing it up, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a matter of educate, educate, educate yourselves. You can, we can point you in a direction to who our legislators are and things like that. But that's as far as we'll go. We, as you said, we have our own opinions.
Yep.
But when it's on the ballot, um, that's when you need to know.
It's up to you.
What your response is.
Alright.
Alright, we go now to twelve B, agreed by title only and adopt resolution. Please read it.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventeen oh four, resolution of the city of Longwood for approving and authorizing execution of a Highway Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement between the State Department of Transportation and the city of Longwood concerning the maintenance and continual updating of designated sections of the high state highway system within city limits provided for an effective date.
Alright, and then it looks like we have a guest speaker on this event, uh, Mr. Chad Smith, please present.
Chad Smith, Public Works Director. Um, just a quick thing on this. Uh, we added this past period, we've added street cleaning for seventeen ninety-two and four thirty-four. We got in discussions with them, and they were really willing to do it. And they could add the money for us to do it, rather than us do it kind of on our own. Um, and it's a benefit to both. They actually don't get that much money to do it. They almost get more money to give us money. That's how it works. So, we're gonna start doing that. I believe it's the same, it might be quarterly, but we're gonna try to do it six times a year. So, hopefully then, four thirty-four and seventeen eighty-two will get swept, you know, regularly now, which I think is a big improvement. So, I just wanted to mention that. Otherwise, this is just a continuation of our agreement we've had for many years.
And the coating in our parking lot, wonderful.
Yeah.
The coating now on four thirty-four is also going to be wonderful too. Good to see that moving fast.
Yep, yep.
Alright, is there anyone with a question for Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor?
You're not, now you're gonna do a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm going to adopt resolution number twenty-five dash seventeen zero four as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boni. Any other discussion? I believe there wouldn't be. So, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Chad, yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes, that being unanimous, twelve, uh, B does pass. City Managers' Report, please.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, very much. Um, Commissioner Morgan, I know you and I talked about this last week, but I just wanna bring it to all of your attention that, uh, the four thirty-four landscaping is moving along. It is a slow, meticulous process, one that takes up to forty-five days for them to kill all the vegetation. So, we're beyond that point now. The vegetation is all dead, and now they're ripping out the old and starting to make corrective measures in the median to prepare for the new landscaping. The good news is, not only will we have improved irrigation, we'll also have drought-tolerant native vegetation that will take place of the previous landscaping that was there that obviously proved that it was not, uh, the best fit for our Florida heat and lack of rain that we had periodically. Furthermore, the company that, uh, has been chosen to do the job and is currently working on the job also will maintain the project for three years total. And that includes the replacement of any, uh, plants that die over time for a variety of reasons. Um, so, uh, that's, that's a big benefit. So, I know that, uh, it's not looking its best right now, but, uh, we're confident that it'll return back to its beautiful state that it was once before. So, I wanted to include that in my report. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, City Attorney's Report?
No report. Thank you.
And we move to the City Clerk.
I have a couple of things. Um, the annual rotation of the deputy mayor will take place at our next meeting on November seventeenth. The position will rotate from District one, Commissioner Shoemaker, to District two, Commissioner Boni. Uh, the city will close at noon on Friday, November twenty-first, in preparation for our twenty-twenty-five Longwood Arts and Crafts Festival. Um, and in reviewing the twenty-twenty-five meeting calendar and this fiscal year's holidays, um, I'm asking the commission to consider canceling the first meeting in January, as we've done in past years. And then the next scheduled meeting would be January nineteenth.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Um, I have one thing on the deputy mayor rotating. Uh, previously, it's been, 'cause it should have come to me now, instead of when it came to me, when Brian became the mayor. And shouldn't I get my six months, my year's worth, my additional six months? I mean, unless Tony just wants to be deputy mayor, that's typically how they.
I don't know how.
I think that's a matter of interpretation of the charter. What does the city attorney say?
You gotta look at the charter.
May I get back to you on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm okay, but I just, because we've done it before, we've had somebody just continue on as deputy mayor. But more than likely, one of them has been made mayor during that, and it's rotated again. But I'm just asking, because that was my understanding. But, I mean, if Tony just wants deputy mayor, that's fine, but.
Let's not, let's not do that. Let's do it according to our charter.
Yeah. The attorney will look.
Yeah, he'll look into that.
As well, we have a city attorney.
Right. I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll be sending out information for the annual Martin Luther King Junior Good Citizenship Award this week. The nominations will be made on the second meeting in December, December fifteenth. And the presentation will be January nineteenth.
That's where you gotta look at the, right?
I have, um, two businesses that requested ribbon cuttings, Renova by Design. They're at one thousand Savage Court for Wednesday, November nineteenth at four thirty. And Form A Wellness has opened now and requesting one for, uh, Friday, November twenty-first at five PM. I'm just asking you guys to confirm, um, approval for those ribbon cuttings.
There's the first one that you mentioned. I, I got an email that said it was canceled.
She just called me today and asking for it.
Right, it, it's there, and next to it says canceled. I don't know what that is. So, it does exist. And I'll put it in my calendar.
Okay. And then just as a reminder, Lyman High School's holding their Veterans Day Ceremony and Breakfast Tuesday, November eleventh, seven thirty, in their courtyard. Um, RSVP is required, so if you're attending, just let me know, and I'll RSVP for you.
I'll be there.
Okay.
What was the first one you mentioned?
Uh, Lyman High School's Veterans Day.
No, they, that might need our discussion.
The ribbon cutting.
Oh, the two ribbon cuttings, yes. Renova by Design, Wednesday, November nineteenth, and For, Form A Wellness, November twenty-first. That's a Friday.
Can you reach out to us and?
Yeah, I'll send the invites.
So, is that it, please?
No. Um, Alta Trilogy's ribbon cutting is on Thursday, November thirteenth at five, just as a reminder. And then, um, finally, the commission received an invitation via, um, email to the grand opening of Urban Youth Park. It's a new park core gym off of, uh, US seventeen ninety-two, twenty-three fifty US Highway seventeen ninety-two. And that's for Saturday, November fifteenth, from four to seven. And I sent out an invite for that too.
Alright, now we're.
That's my report.
Alright, thank you very much. We're adjourned.